Of the Portsmouth City Council scheduled for tonight, August 8th to order. And we'll first have the invocation by Pastor Billy Collins. And I'll ask my colleagues on council to stand for the invocation. And then after the invocation, I'll ask everybody to stand as Councilman Bill Moody leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Good evening to the mayor and the council and everyone here this evening. My name is Pastor Billy Collins. I'm the senior pastor of Centennial Baptist Church. Church is located on 1910 Atlanta Avenue, right in Prentice Park. And I've been there for the last, senior pastor for the last four years. And our city, it's a blessing to be, for me to be able to be here tonight. And also, as we're partnering in the community, this past week, we had our community block party where we gave out over 200 school packets free to the children in the community. So doing great things. Like I say, if you want to see a picture of God's grace, come to Prentice Place. There's greatness in Prentice Place and greatness in Portsmouth. So let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight. And we just come before you, just asking you to move by your spirit in this meeting. We know apart from you, we can do nothing, but through you, we can do all things. So what right now, we just pray, we come into agreement. And right now, at this time, I pray for a spirit of unity, for wisdom, for guidance, Lord, when it comes to decisions regarding this great city that you blessed us to be part of. So I pray, in this meeting, everything be done decently and in order, and that you would just move on every heart here, Lord. Give wisdom, Lord, an impartation of wisdom to those in leadership. And we just thank you as we submit to your lordship. And we thank you again for giving us this opportunity to be here tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item will have electronic roll call. And please indicate your presence by voting yes or hitting the yes button. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Do we not? Okay. Thank you. Our next item of business is approval of minutes. And we have three sets of minutes. We have the minutes of a call meeting of July 24th, 2017. The minutes of a call meeting of July 25th, 2017. And we have the minutes of a regular meeting of July 25th, 2017. What is your pleasure? We have a motion that's been duly seconded to adopt the minutes, to approve the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The first item of business is a public hearing. A public hearing is item, agenda item 17290. And this is a continuance from our July 11th meeting. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Item BUP 1705 Cavalier Manor. C.E. Forehand, Agent for T-Mobile Communications, is requesting a use permit to construct a 165-foot monopole telecommunications tower on the rear portion of 3637 Victory Boulevard. The tower would be located approximately 60 feet from Rapid Ann Street. The property is owned by NTW Properties LLC and is designated on the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map as commercial. Public hearing deferred from the July 11th, 2017 City Council meeting.
We did receive a request from the applicant to defer this to a later date. City Council considered this at its work session last evening. It was the consensus that we proceed with the public hearing. I'll open up the public hearing, allowing anybody that wants to speak for or against. Please come to the lectern and state your name and your address. We do have a court reporter. Please speak into the microphone so we can accurately record what you have to say. And with that, I'll open the public hearing. Is anybody here to speak on this matter, agenda item 17290? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, city manager, Sergeant at Arms. My name is Joseph R. Wright, 1451 Welcome Road in Cavalier Manor, Southern Florida, Virginia. I represent the United Civic League of Cavalier Manor. And we were told that this item would be delayed until they get a chance to talk to our civic league. And we are going to disapprove of this if it's, if it happens tonight. We do not agree with passing this tower on Victory Boulevard at this time. Are there any questions?
Dr. Whitaker, you have a for?
Yes, Mr. Wright, I just want to make sure, because the applicant did request to meet with the civic league, and you are here as a representative of the civic league, saying that the civic league will disapprove. And that's, you're the official representative of the civic league.
That's correct. They had a representative to speak to the president of our civic league, and they told us, they told him that they would be at our meeting in September to move this matter forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Wright? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other speakers, for or against this matter? Any other speakers? Councilman Cherry, Vice Mayor Cherry, I'm sorry.
I was going to make a motion.
Okay. I haven't closed the public hearing. Any other speakers? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and all the other officials. My name is Wilbert Hergel. I live at 603 Dorset Avenue in the great city of Portsmouth. After some, reading some background, I understand this tower will create some radiation and which concerns me, most of the people in my, in my area, senior citizens. And some have breathing problems, and I'm sure this radiation will be very harmful for us. And also, what effect would it have on our television signals? Most of us don't have cable. We have the box with the antennas. When I get home, I like to sit down and look at some of my favorite shows. And if it's interrupted by this radiation, by this tower, it'll be kind of disturbing. So at this time, I'm not for it. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Please come to the lectern. This is a public hearing. You're welcome to come. You don't have to have signed up.
My name is Toya Locke. I reside on 604 Dorset Avenue. I just have a few concerns and questions pertaining to whether studies have been done, what are the consequences and the effects of what happened to the community, and will that be publicized? Therefore, until that is done, I do decline that tower coming as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Again, this is a public hearing. If you desire to speak on this matter, please come to the lectern, state your name and There is no requirement for you to have signed up prior to the public hearing to speak. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
Oh, I only have a few things. Okay. Good evening. My name is Melinda Dotson, and I live at 602 Dorset Avenue. And my five minutes, I'll do it in three. My concern is, I did some research. My concern is children. We have neighborhood schools, and this is what I found. That tower may cause headaches, dizziness, nausea, brain fog, fatigue, and skin rash. That's just a few of the things that I've found. So I vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this matter? Please come to the lectern and state your name and address, please. And sir, you have five minutes.
Yes, my name is Thomas Waters. I'm 602 Dorset Avenue. I have one question. Why this residential area, either one, but chosen?
Thank you, sir. Again, this is a public hearing. And sir, if you would state your name and your address.
Yes, sir. I'm Peter Youngblood. I live at 535 Hampton Place. I'm on the planning commission. And when this came before us, we saw an upswell of community disapproval for this. And the main issue is that this would be a 165-foot single pole tower, which is really out of keeping with the neighborhood. When you add in the fact that there are multiple locations that would accomplish the same thing, not so close to a residential neighborhood, it made us, it made it easy for the planning commission to recommend disapproval of this. And so that's how it came to you. But I want you to understand that there are, there are lots of other applications very close to the one that's proposed, where you would not have the impact on the community of having what would just, would be close to the tallest single structure in Portsmouth. Certainly the tallest structure within two miles of where this is proposed. So I urge you to give this consideration based on the community input and the reasons that the planning commission disapproved this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak on this matter, either for or against? Please come to the lectern and state your name and address. Any other speakers? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And so that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to either approve or disapprove?
Moved.
I heard.
I'll second it. If you want to state your motion.
Yes, sir. Mayor, I move to follow the planning commission's recommendations to deny based on the reasons in the report to us and the will of the community to deny.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'd second it.
Did you get the second? Okay. Any discussion on?
Just a.
Yes, sir.
Just a point of order. So to make sure, we received some communication from our city attorney. Procedurally, do we need to deny the continuance first before we take this vote?
I'm going to defer to the, both the city attorney and the city clerk. I had stated that we had considered the deferral last night, and it was the consensus of council. And is that sufficient consideration of the matter?
Yes, Mayor. You all did, in fact, take up that issue, and as you announced earlier, decided to move forward. You also have before you a resolution.
Right.
For your consideration also, as it relates to the motion.
So if this motion passes, which is to deny, then it would be proper for us to consider the appropriate, the adoption of the appropriate resolution?
That's correct.
And these resolutions were published and given to the public?
Yes, sir.
Correct. Okay. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? The motion is to deny. Any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion to deny, vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries, which is a motion to deny. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the appropriate resolution, please?
A resolution denying the application by T-Mobile Communications for use permit UP 1705 to construct a 165-foot monopole telecommunications tower at 3637 Victory Boulevard.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. City Attorney, for the record, should we read the whole resolution so it's a matter of the transcript?
Mayor, members of city council, you have a resolution before you. It has been published. It is the will of the body. We can go ahead and publish the whole resolution by reading it in. If it's your choice, we have presented it. But given the fact we have this presentation, we certainly can move forward and read.
The chair will entertain any comments by council, whether or not to read the resolution. Hearing none, we'll proceed. We have a resolution that's been read. In order to get this before us, we need a motion to either adopt the resolution or to deny the resolution.
So moved. Adoption.
Okay. Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion to adopt the resolution, which ratifies the previous action of council by resolution, and has been duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, ready for the question? All in favor of the adoption, of the motion to adopt the resolution, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We'll move now to agenda item 17340, which consists of two public hearings. And the first item is UP 1706. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance? Not the caption of the matter, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Item A, UP 1706, Parkview. Zion Baptist Church requests a use permit for a child daycare center on their property at 225 Hatton Street, located in the Parkview subsection. The property is owned Historic Limited Office and contains a church building and associated parking. The Comprehensive Plan recommends institutional public use for the property.
Thank you, ma'am. And the chair recognizes Vice Mayor Cherry.
Thank you, Mayor. May I consult with the city attorney? Because I'm a proud member and trustee of Zion Baptist Church, I will abstain from voting on this item.
Madam Clerk, let the record indicate that Vice Mayor Cherry has recused himself and will abstain from voting.
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is a public hearing, and I'll ask the city manager to bring the appropriate staff forward.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Cherry, and members of council. As the city clerk has read this, is a use permit for a child daycare center at the Zion Baptist Church at 225 Hatton Street. A little more detail, the proposal is for up to 15 children, be up to five children from infancy to two years old, and up to 10 children ages two to, three to five. I think everyone's pretty much familiar with this location of the property. It's Zone Historic Limited Office. Within that zoning district, daycare centers are permitted use with the approval of a use permit by city council. It's a mixed-use area in the Parkview Historic District. And we'll just take a few moments to look at the location of the church and what's, and the general location around it. As you can see, it's on a fairly significant street intersection there, Hatton and Crawford. The church also has an off-site parking lot, which is pretty much catty corner from the church, which would provide additional parking for the church. So it has parking to the rear of the building, and also has the, that parking across the This slide here shows the floor plan of the first floor of the building. As you may be aware, according to our zoning ordinance, daycare centers are required to be on first floors only. They're not allowed at upper floors unless the facility is a daycare center only. In this case, you can see the provision of two rooms with a jack and jill bathroom in between to provide for the daycare space. This is a depiction of the rear of the church. It's got parking in the back. You can also see where the proposed drop-off location would be for, children would be dropped off at the facility. Unlike many of the daycare facilities that have come before council, and many times, this one is actually a pretty clear dedicated drop-off location and provides a safe and efficient means of moving the children from vehicles and into the daycare center. The planning commission considered this application at their meeting of July the 18th. And by vote of four to zero, recommended approval subject to seven conditions which are contained in your staff report. I just mentioned one of those. As you're aware, we have a standard requirement for some outdoor play area. In this case, the condition would require the applicant to work with staff to develop the appropriate location within the property to conduct the outdoor play facilities. So that would be a condition of approval. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have about the application.
Are there any questions to Mr. Baldwin? Is the applicant here tonight?
I know they were. Yes, I think they are here. Yes.
Thank you, sir. All right. With that, I'll open the public hearing. And because we do have people who have signed up, I'll first call on those three people first, and then open it up for anybody that would wish to speak on the matter. Our first speaker is Margaret Mitchell. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Margaret Mitchell, and I reside at 517 Spectator Street, Cavalier Manor. We, the Historic Zion Baptist Church, would like to continue our legacy of educating and enriching the lives of our children, as you have heard, infants through five-year-old preschool. Will all those who are in support of Zion's Child Care Center please stand? Thank you. Any questions for me?
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is the Reverend Dr. Kelvin Turner. Kevin Turner? Dr. Turner, you have five minutes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, city officials, I stand as a resident homeowner in the community, a member of the Parkview Civic League, and a pastor of Zion Baptist Church. Our decision to proceed with a child daycare continues our 152-year history of making a positive impact in the city of Portsmouth, Virginia. This is not a new vision, but a return to our educational and ecclesiastical roots. In the 50s and the 60s, we had Zion Baptist Church Child Care Academy. In fact, we have members on the committee here, who started at Zion Baptist Academy, who did their elementary, middle, and high school in Portsmouth Public Schools, and then began their distinguished career in public education, and stayed there for more than three decades, and retired with distinguished service in administration. It's been said that either you're part of the problem, or you're part of the solution. With the many challenges facing our educational system, Zion is intentionally saying we're part of the solution. We're not doing this in isolation, but we partner with the parents, we partner with the public school system, and we will partner with you today in making a deliberate choice to educate, to enlighten, to enhance, and to empower the lives and the futures of our most treasured gifts, our children. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And our next registered speaker is Rosie, Rosa Wells-Garros. Rosa, please excuse my pronunciation. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, members of council, city manager, and city attorney, members assembled. My name is Rosa Wells-Garros. I reside at 2019 River Pearl Way, Chesapeake, Virginia, and a 53-year member of Zion Baptist Kathy Davis, a teacher from Missouri, once said to her class, "A hundred years from now, it won't matter what house I lived in, how much money will be in my bank account, or what my house looks like. But one thing that will be important is that I made a difference for a child." That came to my mind because, as I think about the work that we're doing, we will make sure that those persons who will be ministering to our young people, who will be working with our young people, providing the care, the love, and the support for our young people, will come with that mindset. They're going to be there, loving, caring, and supporting those 15 youngsters who will be coming to our care. So I am sure that with the support from each of you, we will indeed be able to continue to present, to provide our young people with the love and care that they need to become active and productive citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And Dr. Whitaker, you have a for?
Dr. Wells-Garros, you know we couldn't let you leave that easily. I guess it's true that great educators never retire. And I know that you will provide excellency to a church that has an excellent legacy and history of being involved in the community and concerned about education. And I just. And I just want to commend you as our former dean of First College, and now you will be helping to prepare some toddlers to go into First College, and so we thank you.
Thank you so much, but I'm not a doctor, but in a way, I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing, and is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this matter, either for or against? If so, please come to the lectern and state your name and your address, please. Any other speakers? Yes, sir. You have five minutes.
Well, I won't take five minutes. My name is Mel Boyd. I live just off of the corner of that picture, at the Myrtles. I drive by this church every day, and I will tell you, it's one of the best-kept properties around. But I just have to tell you that I really don't see anybody other than church members here, and I'm a member of the community, and I support this. And I support it because when my daughter was three years old, I became a single mom, as they put it. There was no place on the school application for a single father. And if it wasn't for this type of service, I wouldn't have a daughter who's almost forty, who's successful, a college graduate, has a couple of kids, and it's really because groups like this did this, and I'm just touched. There doesn't seem to be much community support. It's just church. And that's the reason I'm up here. I actually came here to watch the proceedings and watch another process. But I fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else would want to speak either for or against this matter? This is a public hearing. Any other speakers? If not, declare the public hearing... Yes, sir. You've had... Thank you, sir. All right, the public hearing is now closed, and so that this matter can be before us for our consideration, is there a motion to approve?
So move for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve that's been duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, we'll call for the question, and remembering that Vice Mayor Cherry is abstaining. All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries? Thank you. And this will be back on second reading at our next council meeting. The next item is U.P. seventeen dash oh-seven, and Madam Clerk, would you read the caption?
Downtown, Jared Chalk of Seven Cities Real Estate LLC requests a use permit for up to twenty-seven residential units above the first floor of the combined properties at 325 through 327 High Street and 341 High Street, located at the southeast corner of High and Court Streets in the downtown T-five zoning district. The comprehensive plan recommends mixed-use downtown development for the property.
And Madam City Manager, Dr. Pat?
Yes, Mr. Baldwin, Planning Director.
Good evening, once again. As noted, this is, in fact, a request to convert the upper floors of the new Kern Building and the building adjacent to it into up to twenty-seven residential units. This property is in the D-one district. It's Zone T-five sub-district. And in this district, multifamily uses are permitted with the approval of a use permit by city council. We'll just take a, sort of a quick look around. I think everyone's familiar with this. Pretty prominent intersection downtown at High and Court Streets. There's the edge of the building adjacent to the location of the application. Back up, and this is a early rendering of this building. It's part of the applicant's submission materials, and as you can see, as today, the ground floor was prominently built for commercial uses, and the upper floors, most recently, have been office space. As you may be aware and recall from our discussions on the market analysis in the downtown, we are continuing to see interest in residential development downtown, residential conversion, and as is the case in most of Hampton Roads, we're continuing to see a lack of interest or demand for office space. So this property, again, is going to, was proposed to remain commercial on the first floor. It's got a few tenants, like Jimmy John's is located on the first floor of the building, has some vacant commercial space that the applicant is proposing to attempt to fill. And again, with the upper floors of the building being proposed for conversion to residential, I just mentioned the proposed renovation would consist of twenty-one bedroom units, three two-bedroom units, and four studio apartments. So that would be the proposed conversion of the building. The Planning Commission, at their meeting of July eighteenth, considered this application and voted four to zero to recommend approval subject to four conditions, which are included in the staff report. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from city council for Mr. Baldwin? Hearing done. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, and when I open the public hearing, I'll ask you to come forward to the lectern if you want to speak on the matter, either for or against. And I now declare the public hearing open, and any speakers, please come to the lectern and state your name and address, please.
Welcome. Thank you all for your time. I'm Rick Hen, H-E-N-N, from, with the representative developer, and I'm looking at, if there are any questions about this. This is going to bring this building back to life, and it's going to really add some things. As you noticed, most of them are one-bedrooms, because today, not in our day, if you've got three bedrooms, you see how many people you can get in there. Today, they only want one bedroom. They don't want roommates. So we're finding out that that's what the market is, and that's a good market for your downtown businesses and all. That'll help support those and all. So I just, as part of the developer, I just wanted to thank you all for your time and this and looking at this. Any questions?
Yes. Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
Good evening, and thank you for your investment in our city. Can you share any information on what the price points will be on the rent of the units at this point in time?
Not really. We're still going through historical tax credits, and you know what that's like. You know, they can add, you know, they can add half a million to the building without even knowing it. So there'll be market value. I know, I know what they are in Norfolk. I'm sorry, I'm not as familiar with they are over here. But it's right around nine hundred to a thousand dollars for a one-bedroom, and twelve hundred dollars for a two-bedroom. Because when we grew up, if you got wall-to-wall carpet and air conditioning, you were happy. And if you got dishwasher, you were happier. Today, they want wood floors, granite countertops, you know, a place to assemble, your Wi-Fi. I mean, they want a lot more, and they want what their parents have at home. And so, in a smaller scale, so that's a change of the amenities and all that they want, and that's, that gears to the millennials and the older generation that just doesn't want to take care of a house anymore. So that's the two people they're looking for. They wants to walk everywhere.
Right. Sounds like they're going to be nice. Thank you again for your investment.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, we're saying, how will the parking be accommodated?
It's, that one I got to look at. I haven't, the parking, it's kind of like Norfolk. It doesn't have a restriction for parking, so they'll be, they'll be parking on the city street.
So let me ask Mr. Baldwin the question. As far as the parking, then how will that be accommodated along the streets? Will there be special permits?
Yes. Dr. Pat, would you bring it?
Yes, Mr.
Yes, Dr. Whitaker. In this case, there are no special permits. The general expectation for most of these buildings in which they're converting for residential or other uses is that they would primarily, for longer-term parking, would park in city parking garages. They would make arrangements with the parking authority for that. Or if they can make private arrangements with other private lots in which spaces may be available, they would use that as well. And just mention, as Mr. Hen noted, at this point, you know, our downtown zoning district does not have a parking requirement as such, and buildings we've seen recently where it's new construction, most of the times, we're seeing parking, even though it's not required, be provided by the developers where it's new construction, but in these building conversions where there's no space, where the building's in fact taking up the entire parcel, no parking is really possible from the developer in that standpoint, within the confines of their parcel.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
If I could make another statement on that. From your neighboring city, the parking's usually with the parking garages. They put, you know, it took up a lot of the parking garages from the city for nighttime, because during the daytime, those people are usually at work or not there. So it was a mixture, and it helped both sides of that fence with that. So that'll be something we'll be looking at, and there are parking garages right behind the building, as you know, over there near the museum, children's museum and all.
Thank you. Any other speakers that want to speak on this matter? Please come to the lectern, state your name and address. Sir, you have five minutes.
Hey, I'm Michael Thornton. I live in, on thirteen oh-six Marshall Avenue. That's in Brighton, but yeah, I come to High Street a lot, and I think it'll be good if we're fixing up more of these buildings. And like, the parking issues, that's not really their fault, because like, eventually, we're going to have to build more parking garages around High Street, because like, I'd like to see all these buildings fixed up, like with restaurants and housing and all that. It'll be good. So yeah, this is a step in the right direction. It'll help, it'll help High Street and Old Town in the long run. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers? This is a public hearing. Any other speakers? Any other person wants to speak for or against? Hearing done. We'll close the public hearing, and again, in order for us to consider this matter, is there a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve the application that's been duly seconded. Any discussion? Read the vote on the question. All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries. This brings us to the city manager's report, and Agenda Item seventeen three forty-one, which is the adoption of an ordinance accepting certain grant funds. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a conference and education assistance program grant in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs, and appropriating said amount in the FY two thousand eighteen Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services in connection with the Women and Public Service Conference.
Again, in order for us to consider this matter, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? We have a motion to approve the ordinance, to adopt it. It's been duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries. Which brings us to Item seventeen three forty-two, which is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance accepting certain grant funds. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an aid to local ports program grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars from the Port of Virginia, and appropriating said funds in the FY two thousand eighteen Grants Fund for disbursement by the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Leisure Services in connection with the construction of the Elizabeth River Project River Academy at Paradise Creek Nature Park.
Thank you, ma'am. In order for us to consider this, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion to adopt or approve the ordinance. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
This brings us to Item seventeen three forty-three, which is the consideration of the adoption of a ordinance, again, accepting certain grant funds. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting public assistance grant revenue in the amount of four hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred two dollars and thirty-two cent from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and the Federal Emergency Management Agency for reimbursement of costs associated with Hurricane Matthew, and increasing FY two thousand eighteen general fund revenue by one hundred thirty-three thousand, thirty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. FY two thousand eighteen public utilities fund revenue by forty-four thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. FY two thousand eighteen waste management fund revenue by two hundred sixty-eight thousand, five hundred sixty-three dollars and thirty cents. And FY two thousand eighteen golf fund revenue by two thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars and seventy-two cents.
Thank you, ma'am. In order for us to consider this, is there a motion to approve the ordinance, adopt the ordinance? We have a motion to adopt the ordinance. It's been duly seconded. Any discussion? Ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, which is to adopt the ordinance, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to Item seventeen three forty-four, which is the consideration of adoption of a ordinance accepting a local government challenge grant. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a local government challenge grant in the amount of forty-five hundred dollars from the Virginia Commission for the Arts, and appropriating said funds in the FY two thousand eighteen Grants Fund for use by the Department of Museums to support the Tidewater Arts Outreach Program.
Thank you, ma'am. In order for us to consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Okay, I heard a motion. Is there a second? Okay. We do have a motion to adopt. It's been duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries. Which brings us to Item seventeen three forty-five, which is the adoption of a ordinance accepting a donation and appropriating the same. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting with appreciation a donation of five hundred dollars from the Business Consortium for Arts Support through its Gold Key PHR fundraising project, and appropriating said funds to the FY two thousand eighteen Grants Fund for use by the Department of Museums to support the exhibit The Underground Railroad, photographs of a path to freedom.
Thank you, ma'am. In order for us to consider this, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? We have a motion to adopt. It's been duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries, which brings us to Item seventeen three forty-six, which is the adoption of a ordinance accepting certain grant funds. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of six thousand dollars from the Business Consortium for Arts Support, and appropriating said amount in the FY two thousand eighteen Grants Fund for general operating support for the Portsmouth Art and Cultural Center.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, in order for us to consider this, is there a motion to adopt? We have a motion to adopt the ordinance. It's been duly seconded. Any discussion? Ready for the question. All in favor of the motion to adopt, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Which brings us to new business, Item seventeen three forty-seven, Boards and Commissions, and Vice Mayor Cherry.
Thank you, ma'am. I have no nominations this evening.
Thank you, sir. Seventeen three forty-eight, items submitted by council members, and Dr. Whitaker, you're recognized.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as a follow-up to our discussion from yesterday pertaining... Yes, Mr. Mayor, as a follow-up to our discussion from yesterday pertaining to getting the consent of council to direct the city manager to submit a statement to our police department, either through the city manager or the chief, in regards to the very derogatory statements that President Trump made regard to the inhumane treatment of citizens or non-citizens. And we want to make sure that we're on record, along with other police departments around the country, as well as other organizations, not condoning that type of behavior, but respecting humanity. And we just want to make sure that we have a culture of support here in the city of Portsmouth, and that our silence will not indicate any type of cooperation with that type of conduct that was suggested.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm doing this on behalf of my colleague. I think this is known as Councilwoman Simmons's announcements of the exciting things going on in our city. And since she's sitting right here, I better not mess it up. First of all, we've got the Old Town Farmers Market. If you've never been there, you're missing a treat. That's every Saturday through December, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., the corner of High and Court Streets. Ms. Danaher always assembles a wide variety of fresh farmer goods. One in particular, Deer Haven from Spring Grove, and of course, you've got David's Fresh Seafood, but it's a large variety. You need to check it out. Sunset Thursdays at Portside. As we know, Portside is really coming back, and this is like the preamble. That happens every Thursday through September, 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. This Thursday, Tide Water Drive Ban, and the following Thursday is Evolution Soul. Sounds like some Golden Oldies there. The next thing on the list, Resistance and Resilience Exhibit. That's a memoir workshop of the Jim Crow era. That happens Thursday, August the 10th. That'll be from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., and that's at the Portsmouth Colored Community Library Museum. Movies in the Park at Portsmouth City Park. That has a nice rhyme to it. That's Saturday, August the 12th at 7:00 p.m., and the featured movie is The Secret Life of Pets. Sounds exciting.
It's a great movie.
It sounds like it. Next one is Family Movie Night. That occurs at the Cherslin Library. That's Tuesday, August the 15th at 6:00 p.m. And for more events and activities, visit online at www.porsmouthvaevents.com. Did I do alright? There you go. Boy, the pressure is off.
Thank you. You want to speak again?
Yes.
Councilman Moody, how's the floor?
Mayor and colleagues, as we know, we were given some information, a report back, if you may, on the number of outstanding warrants in our city. Without going into detail, I do want to make it official in the minutes that a plan for retiring some of these outstanding war- they are warrants, warrants, will be given to council at the next opportunity. That's all I'll say about that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as a follow-up to our last regular meeting, there was information that was requested from the city attorney regarding the GPDC enabling language from council that appointed members to GPDC and as well as recognized the one-third interest share that the city, PRHA, and Portsmouth Partnership agreed to. And didn't receive those documents, and wanted to find out from the city attorney when those documents will be forthcoming.
Thank you, sir. And it's my understanding that this will be on the next work session agenda.
It will. That's fine.
Yes, sir.
Also, as we consider that, could we also consider a previous discussion as far as transferring that property under EDA control?
Let's see where the conversation goes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, this brings us to Item 17349, which is Report on Pending Items.
Mayor, we do not have any report back on pending items, but I would like to just make a correction. During our public work session, I referred to Norfolk State's School of Social Work as Evelyn School of Social Work, but to make and correct that on the record. The school's social work is known as Evelyn R. Strong School of Social Work.
Thank you, ma'am. Which brings us to Item 17350, which is Non-Agended Speakers. And our first speaker is Lindsey Jones, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and citizens of Portsmouth. My name is Lindsey Jones. I live at 1603 Barron Street in the West Parkview section of Portsmouth. Tonight, I wish to present to you a possibility. Portsmouth has a history which spans over three centuries of distinguished service for the maritime and fishing industries, as well as the naval heritage to our country. Portsmouth, for such a small town, having a landmass of only 34 square miles, is the location of the Norfolk Naval Shipyard, the oldest, largest, and finest naval facility in America. Yet we have one of the smallest and limited-access naval history museums in the country. Portsmouth, with a little bit of work, can have a world-class naval maritime and transportation museum, enabling us to compete with rival cities such as Boston, New York, San Francisco, Portsmouth, England, but to name a few. At the present time, there is limited space for potential growth at the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard Museum. I would propose that Portsmouth consider using the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame facility as an appropriate venue for expansion, using the collection of the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard Museum as its core. The building is already set up as a museum, and many of the necessary infrastructure units are already in place: heating, cooling, exhibition spaces, et cetera. This would greatly reduce the cost of implementation. The use of the sports gallery, a 2,775-square-foot room, would provide ample space for receptions, conferences, as well as meetings. An additional meeting room includes a digital theater with a seating capacity of 125. These spaces would be ideal for reunions, weddings, club meetings, as well as other events. Funding for a project of this scale will necessarily need to be creative. I have included a number of sources of possible support in the packet prepared for each of you. You should have that at the present time. The use of this space could encompass all the items that already exist in the Shipyard Museum, in addition to numerous items which may be obtained on loan, short or permanent loan, short-term or permanent loan, in conjunction and cooperation with the United States Naval Museum Storage Facilities, one of which is located in Richmond. I have spoken to Joseph Judge, senior curator at the Naval History Museum in Norfolk, and he has indicated that this is possible. Please note that the Naval History Museum in Norfolk also has limited space for exhibitions and exhibitions, and the thrust there is a focus solely on the United States Navy. Of interest to the council is the possibility of the home porting and birthing of some ships planned by Colonial Navy, Inc., as it plans to build up to 16 copies of historic American and Canadian square-rig sailing ships from the period of 1607 to 1780. Each will be licensed to carry 12 paying trainees in double cabins. Other exhibits which will attract visitors from all over the world will be U.S. Naval History, that of the U.S. Coast Guard, the Container Piers, the Coal Piers, local and baywide fishing industries, as well as musical events. Additional exhibits may be dedicated to the region's oyster fisheries, the ferry service from Norfolk to Portsmouth, Baltimore, as well as that from Cape Charles to Little Creek. For some of us, we still remember riding on those ferries. The existing Shipyard Museum structure could possibly be converted into a welcome and visitor center. In reviewing the annual attendance figures, it becomes all too apparent that the Shipyard Museum and its satellite, the Light Ship Museum, fall far behind in attendance numbers compared to the maritime and naval history museums throughout the United States. Should Portsmouth implement an expansion of the Shipyard Museum and the existing Sports Hall of Fame, the net result would be a marked increase in tourism traffic for the Old Town area. A more detailed list of possible events and activities may be found in the handouts provided to each of you. You will find figures in attendance and membership, as well as income produced by numbers of naval history museums throughout the United States in the handout provided. I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Mr. Jones, thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for the work that you've put into the packet that you provided us with. I think your idea has a lot of potential. There are a lot of artifacts in the shipyard. We know that, that they would be willing to loan us for a museum expansion. As we know, our current naval museum is like trying to put 10 pounds in a two-pound bag. It's been bursting at the seams for years, and it is, I think, untapped potential as far as drawing visitors here to Portsmouth. So what you've done, hopefully, is to pique everyone's interest so we can get it on the planning stage and see what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Darlene Jones. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Darlene V. Jones. My name is Darlene V. Jones. I'm the widow of Sergeant First Class Ronnie L. Lewis Jones, Sr., and we resided in Portsmouth at 1108 Tazewell Street in the Cavalier Manor area for 15 years. We moved to Chesapeake in 2002 at 4307 Spincaster Lane. I'm here on behalf of my family. My family is in an emergency state. Our lives have been threatened. My husband's life actually was taken by Murrayview Medical Center on January the 18th. I actually called Ms. Elizabeth, who was then the vice mayor of Portsmouth, and I'm here on behalf of my sons. I have five sons. Their lives are being threatened, and they have been taken from me and my husband before they actually took his life. We did not know, me and my husband did not know, that we gave birth to genius kids, straight-A students, and my three oldest sons, Gary West, Ronnie Jones, Jr., Kirk Anthony Jones, students that went to Ascinoacum, and my last two sons, who is Cory Jones, Cory Uriah Gabriel Jones, and my baby Kobe Bryant Matthew Jones, who just turned 18, was educated through the Chesapeake Public School System. I'm sad to say, I mean, as I look on the panel, I've talked to Dr. Whitaker, Ms. Elizabeth, Ms. Patton, Ms. Wells, I mean, principals, congressmen, about this issue, because they have actually taken my two baby boys that was educated through the Portsmouth Public School System. All my sons, like I said, were not just geniuses. My sons were actually, Kirk Jones, which is my middle son, was Ascinoacum's quarterback for years. Also, he was a four-time Junior Olympic participant. He represented Portsmouth. Like I said, Portsmouth didn't tell me my children were geniuses, nor did they put them and gifted in talent programs. And I think by, in looking in hindsight, they saw the talent of Kirk. He's actually, like I said, he was an Olympic, went to Hershey's. And my second son, like I said, Cory, that was educated through Western Branch, became a three-time All-American track athlete. He now serves, I mean, panel, he resides in Iowa. He's been there since his senior year, 2003, taken out of my home with Chesapeake Police there. No one has done anything. I have pleaded to, like I said, not only your city, Chesapeake, Iowa, where my son still reside and being held there, threatened, afraid to come home, because they told him if he came home, they were gonna kill me and my husband. So like I said, my husband has already, life been taken, and just on Ju- July, last Friday, the 28th, I was facing five years, one to five years, on a false eluding charge that only by the grace of God I stand here now. Because not only am I, I'm 58 years old, never been in trouble in my life. My husband has a clearance with the government. He's a drill sergeant. He's a Vietnam vet, and he worked for 45 years of civil service and does not have a criminal record. And to all acknowledgement, Christian, being a Christian family, I have raised up five sons, these five sons I'm telling you about, who are exceptional, like I said, athletes, honor roll students, geniuses. And like I said, their life is in danger. They're being held. And I'm pleading, I mean, I have been, I mean, just outraged at, I mean, us never having any criminal records, and I raised five sons, five black, strong, African-American sons that I've stayed home with all my life to make sure these children were safe.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Okay, I need help.
Dr. Patton, would you have somebody from your staff visit with the speaker, Mrs. Jones, and get the pertinent information?
Yes, Mayor, Mr. Pace will chat.
Thank you, ma'am. Deputy City Manager Pace will meet with you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Please up my ground.
The next speaker is Sergeant Major Clyde Toler, and sir, you have five minutes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, beside the office, White and Staff, City Manager, and City Attorney, Clyde Toler, proud view. Tonight, I come before you because we had two little setups in the paper today, not the day last week, but look, we're moving on fine. So let's stop looking at the negative and the bad thing. Let's look at what's good things are happening in the city of Portsmouth. At this time, I was special occasion, I'm gonna give to Ms. Ida K. Jordan, I'm gonna give her some rose. Take a couple of that, I'm gonna give her a little token here of a pin that we're on her for the Fleet Preserver Association, which includes the Marine Corps, the Navy, and the Coast Guard. See, because we're not, we are fleet. We are fleet service. And branch 37 of Portsmouth, Virginia, you know, we have And Branch 37 of Portsmouth, Virginia, you know, we have did a lot of good things in the city. We're going to continue to do it. I want these papers they passed around to you because Ms. Jordan and I have been reporters together. We've been staff writers together. At Zion Baptist Church, we used to meet there when it was Methodist Church. I was the president, she was the vice president. We've been together a long time. I'll be 19 years old in about three more months. I don't talk about ladies' age because you know you get in trouble. But anyway, I got a card here from the Marine Corps, Navy, and the Coast Guard, active duty and retirees. It's a lot of retired militaries in this naval. And I would like to see Peter Youngblood get together, and let's get the veterans together. There's a lot of good things we do that you people don't know about, but I think we could come together and be more help to the city doing things than what we do now. It's a good thing that Zion Church is doing. This is good. I live in Powerview, I know because we used to meet there when it was a Baptist church, and I attend there now because of the city league. So I've been there, and I've seen you there, Miss Church. So I'm not going to say I have never seen you. But I want everyone to know that we congratulate, I congratulate, and so does the Fleet Preserver Association, Ms. Ida K. Jordan, for all her support. And if you look at those newspapers that I pass, some is 30, 35 years old. Those are good articles. Your history people could talk to me or talk to her because they don't know what's happening. Because when you come down 64 into Portsmouth, you ride on dead people, dead black slaves. You didn't know that, did you? Because see, when they die, all they did at Fisher Cemetery was put a rock there. And a lot of grave they took up and some they didn't. So they just put the dirt up there. But when you come down there, if you go back in the day, Ms. White can take it because that's when we didn't have no, you know, this camera and all that. She was a little young thing. Used to be about 20 of us used to come here just to look at her, white and black, when she was a little young secretary. But she'd be in a long time. I ain't going to pick on her too much. But anyway, Ms. Jordan has did a lot of things in this city that a lot of people don't know about. And if you get a chance, if you read some of the history, how she went to people housing, black, white, it didn't matter to her. And now, I look at her, and we are very good friends from a long time, time ago, and I think these little roses to her is enough to say thank you for all you did. Because we used to look for the current. We took for the current, we didn't get the paper. We looked for the current because the current had about 40 pages. Now you're lucky if you get two pages. So I take off my hat, and I hope this city does too, to Ms. Ida K. Jordan, and thank you, and have a blessed night.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Ms. Jordan. Thank you. Our next speaker is Steve Carroll, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, Steve Carroll. 19 years old. Clyde, I've always known you to be a straight shooter. That's the first time I ever heard you toll fib. Regrettably, on a more serious note, I'd like to read an excerpt from Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority's public relations website. "Making our city more inviting than ever means welcoming the best and brightest professionals to our team. Endeavors at all times to employ the most capable person available for each position. All actions affecting employees shall be based solely on merit." What a sack of horse feathers. My comments tonight regarding two articles in the paper from August 2nd, August 3rd concerning a suspected theft at PRHA. What troubles me, there's two issues here. In particular, an individual who was hired and having been convicted of theft at Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority to the tune of about $2,300. According to the paper, she was paid a salary of $44,000 a year by PRHA. That's more than the starting pay of a Portsmouth teacher or a police officer that puts his life on the line every day. Something's terribly wrong with this picture. You know, sooner or later, a rotten apple will always show up in a bushel basket. It's unavoidable. This individual should have never been hired in a fiduciary responsibility like she had with PRHA, period. That's appalling. Now, as for the theft, I don't know who was responsible. But for this board to pick somebody like this to work for PRHA is just irresponsible. Whoever's responsible for that theft, that's $8,000. That's not pocket change. That's felonious, whoever was guilty of that. Obviously, the board's vetting is very poor. But my big concern tonight is, what changes has Portsmouth City Council made in vetting the people, and correct me if I'm wrong, that they put on the board of PRHA? That's even more important. Councilman Moody, I agree with you 100%. This doesn't pass the smell test. It absolutely reeks. Why does PRHA hold sway over whether charges are filed? This should be the purview of the Commonwealth's Attorney. This should be investigated by that office, and they decide whether charges should be filed and who they should be filed against. Where is the outrage here? I hear Councilman Moody complaining about it, but that's all I hear. There's something terribly wrong with this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it would be appropriate if this council, at the next opportunity, gets an update on how that situation is progressing and going forward, how the Housing Authority is going to vet future hirees better than they have been doing. And recently, I did speak to the city manager about, I think, this council and the Housing Authority, at times, I don't feel that we're pulling in the same direction. And I think, and that's a whole different issue than what Mr. Carroll just spoke about, but at the appropriate time, maybe Dr. Patton and this council can get together and decide how we can foster a better relationship and make sure that the two bodies have the, are pulling in the same direction, reference the development and redevelopment of this city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Lakeisha Ackerson, and ma'am, you have five minutes. And ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Ackerson is a member of the Portsmouth School Board.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the City Council. My name is Lakeisha Klue-Ackerson, and my address is Onfau. I must say, it's been a while since I stood here, but today I feel it necessary that the stakeholders and the community is aware of my issue. This is regarding the line of communication between myself and our city manager, Dr. Littis Pettis Patton, if I got that correct. I must admit, she has a good gatekeeper. Whoever is answering the phone in that office is a true blocker. And that also gives me the impression that she is not accessible to us. The people in our community value accessibility. It's ridiculous to send an email and leave several messages and never receive a call back. I constantly get that Dr. Patton is out of office. So I guess we're paying her to be out of office. My question is, if calling me back was such a hassle, why couldn't that task be assigned to the deputy city manager, just like Ms. Jordan just received Lavoris before, just a while ago? In my role, in my day job, I'm offered several leadership positions, and if I can't handle that position, then I say, no, I'm just not able to do that task. And Dr. Patton, I'm asking you the same, the same question. If you're not able to handle the role of being a city manager, as well as being customer service to our citizens, then why don't you just step down? Having an open line of communication is critical to move in Portsmouth forward, and your negligence shows a lack of care, concern, and leads me to conclude that you are not demonstrating a genuine level of commitment to the city of Portsmouth. My reason for contacting you was to ask for an in-kind donation of the Showmobile Tables and Tents for Portsmouth Youth Weekend, which is actually this weekend, happening throughout the city, Friday through Sunday. Portsmouth Youth Weekend is a time for all youth citizens under the age of 18 to become involved in the community, and for all Portsmouth citizens to uplift the contributions that these youth make to their communities every day of the year through our own businesses, academic achievement, and volunteerism. Approximately 25% of the U.S. population and approximately 12% of the Portsmouth population is under the age of 18. How are we showing that we have a vested interest in the youth? I did what I had to do and went through the proper channels. I submitted my paperwork, I made phone calls, and I haven't received anything, no callbacks. Again, this is disappointing to me, but it also shows that as an elected official, we don't have preferential treatment. So you guys, I'm living proof that there is no preferential treatment. I'm asking you today, Mayor Rowe, Members of the Council, to please place fire on this issue. Like I said, this is actually happening this weekend. Also, I want to let you guys know that Virginia Beach and the City of Chesapeake city managers have the expectation of responding within a 24 to 72-hour timeframe. It will also be heartbreaking to the youth and myself if they don't have a stage to perform on. I just would like an answer. And it's crazy that I had to come here and counsel my volunteer meeting with the parents who's volunteering this weekend to speak at the council meeting when this could have been solved over a phone call or email. I would like to also add that this isn't a last-minute request. It's actually been a month. Help, sincerely, Humble Activist. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Summison.
Mayor, I'm actually going to admonish you for not calling the speaker out of order. We don't allow personal attacks in our meetings on ourselves or other citizens. Ms. Ackerson, I saw your Facebook post, and that was alarming about a phone call. And I'm sorry you didn't get a call back in an appropriate time, but every citizen in the city of Portsmouth sure knows how to pick up a phone and call anybody on this group and say, you know, I made a phone call, I didn't get a return phone call from, instead of making it a Facebook issue or coming here and making it a federal case. I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed in the mayor for not calling you out of order, and we didn't have to hear all that. That's ridiculous. I'm disappointed in everybody.
Thank you, ma'am. And the chair recognizes Dr. Patton.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, I call Deputy City Manager Pace to the podium to please give credence to your assignments and the follow-up in speaking with Mrs. Bithia, who was the initial or appointed person in regard to this event. In addition, I have spoken with Mrs. Ackerson, and I spoke with her and Mrs. Berea at the Mr. Randall's opening. So it is not that we have not talked. And in that regard, the schools are having the Forward Back-to-School Event on the 19th. In working exclusively with the schools and talking with Dr. Berea, he indicated that our support to the event, which is on the 19th, was exactly what they had asked us to support. There are many people who want to have events, but we only have so much equipment, staff, and opportunity in order to serve others. We are working very closely with Portsmouth Public Schools for the Forward Back-to-School Event, and this event was one week different. We had already put in place not only our parks and recreation, our equipment, and all of the assets that we will put to a large event, which is on the 19th. What we encourage persons to do, instead of everybody wanting to have their own event, let us all partner and have one large, successful event. Thank you.
Let's have order. Ma'am.
Mr. Pace.
No, ma'am. And listen, please sit down. And we're not going to make this a public debate. You can approach her and get any information that you need to get. All right, the next speaker is Mr. TJ Wright, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Dr. Patton, and other citizens and members of Portsmouth that are here. My name is TJ Wright. I am a resident of Portsmouth. I'm a business owner here in Portsmouth, and I'm an attorney that practices here in Portsmouth, largely in the juvenile and domestic relations district court. I was here at the last council meeting and spoke about a post-dispositional program, explained it to council. I also had advocated for the consideration of us getting our own detention facility here. Council, I've handed out a packet just for the people that are not here or do not have one. There are five portions to it. The first is what I like to call the Reader's Digest version. It's three pages with regard to a overview of the post-dispositional program. The second part is a PowerPoint presentation given by Vdapp, which is the Virginia Detention Association of Poste Programs, which is comprised of coordinators, the membership of poste coordinators. The third portion is statistics that relate specifically to Portsmouth, which I'll reference. Then we have a section for resources. And then lastly, which I think is just informative in nature, is a flow chart with regard to the juvenile process and what kids can expect, or parents, or really our council, if a child were to come into contact with the courts. Now, just to follow up the last time that I was here, the post-dispositional program is just another tool which I think gives our court services unit and our courts the ability to help our youth here today. And just the high points are that it's less than 180 days or less of stay. The children get counseling and treatment, and they also get schooling. I think last time I used an example as to kind of what happens when a child gets into the program or into the juvenile justice system. So I think the best thing to do today is to tell you about a success story that I've had since the last time that we were here. I had a young man in Newport News who was tried for assault and battery. He got in a fight with his stepfather at home. He was having some problems at home, drug use, things of that nature. He was very resistant to use any sort of treatment programs and was ordered to the post-dispositional program. This was a very bright young man. He just had some problems coping and emotional issues. The first time we came back for the first review, he had very low marks, was not receptive to the program. The second time that we came back, his marks got a little bit better, but you could tell his behavior was getting better, but he still was having a hard time adjusting to dealing with authority. The third, fourth, and fifth time, they were exponentially better. He was enrolled, after the fifth review that we had, he was enrolled in dual credit program for high school and college. He had all excellent marks from the program, and he had successfully He had all excellent marks from the program, and he had successfully completed everything that was required of him, and he got released thirty days early. It was an incentive-based program, and I saw firsthand this young man's behavior change from start to, to finish. The other thing, the other impact that was monumental, is when we first came in, and I was his guardian at Lydum, so I was his advocate, I wasn't his defense attorney to try and have him proven not guilty, I was there to do the best thing for that young man. And I dealt with his mother very much. And at the beginning of the process, his mother didn't want anything to do with him, really, she had washed his, her hands and said, this is really a bridge too far for me. And that last review period that we were there, I'd never seen that, that young lady smile so much, and just was really to welcome her son to come home. So I would encourage the, the council to seriously consider a detention facility here for the city of Portsmouth. Now, as my time runs on, there's two things that I think that, that need to be addressed in conclusion. First, my suggestion of this is not a criticism of our current court services unit, I think Ms. Grimm and her staff do an excellent job, but they just need a little bit more tools in their toolbox. If you look at the, the second and last section that's there, when it talks to the statistics is what we have here, there's three statistics that I think are important. The majority of felonies that juveniles are committed, that are convicted of here in Portsmouth, two-thirds of them are property crimes. These aren't violent crimes, these are just people that really need a little bit more hands-on approach moving forward. The next page is with regard to their age, and if you see from fourteen to eighteen, statistically, the increases. And then lastly, with regard to race, eighty-five percent of the African-American population is what comes in contact with our court system.
Sir, your time is up.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, Ms. Wright, once again, thank you for the presentation and information. I think the whole school-to-prison pipeline, as much as we can do to stop that, we should. We had a presentation earlier, Mayor, with Dr. Patton presenting some of the outlines of the Poverty Task Force. I think it, if there's no objection from council, I think it would be appropriate to have this scrutinized through the ODU Research Group to see the viability and any recommendations they have. I, I know the last time it was presented, there, there were some funding opportunities through grants, and I, I saw that in the packet, but I think that would be part of that whole crime initiative piece, as well as commingling that with the poverty discussion we're gonna have.
Anybody opposed to that? Okay.
Mayor, may I comment on that?
No.
Yes, sir.
Your time is up. You may be seated.
Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of, of City Council, Dr. Whitaker mentioned briefly, but in your executive brief from our last meeting, when Mr. Wright presented, I followed through, put in your executive brief that the city's grant officer communicated with Mrs. Kara Freeman, account executive of Grant Finder, which is the city's grant researching firm, and they are performing a deep search of all funders which provide grants for addressing juvenile justice system post-disposition programs. And as soon as we get that report, of which Mr. Weller and Mrs. Freeman are working toward, then I will make it available to council and pass it on to agencies that can partner with us for seeking grants.
In addition, it's the consensus of council to pass this on to Old Dominion for their review.
Got it.
Okay, Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, if there's no objection from council, I, I would like to just hear from Attorney Wright, the follow-up, because this is a, a major issue of importance, if there's no objection from council.
This would be an amendment to, or a suspension of council rules, is there a motion to do that? Tonight? As an alternative, could we have Dr. Patton meet with Mr. Wright to discuss this document?
Point, just a point of order, this, this doesn't require a suspension of council rules to have a follow-up question. We have had follow-up questions with other speakers, and we didn't suspend the rules to do that. I, I think that, to remain consistent, that if council wishes to hear from the citizens, I thought this was the time to do that.
Well, you're correct, Dr. Whitaker, and I didn't hear you say that you wanted to ask him another question, is that what you want to do?
Well, I do, because he had a follow-up question I wanted to hear in regards to the statement I had made.
But do you have a question for him?
Yes, I do.
Okay, what's the nature of your question?
The nature, well, the nature of my question is in regards to this presentation that he just made, and once again, what I'm asking for comes from council, and we know that we have allowed citizens to respond.
Right, hold on. You ask the question, and you limit your, your comments to, your comments to the answer, please.
Absolutely.
Let, let him ask the question, please.
Yes. Mr. Wright, the issue that I presented to the City Manager, what were you about to follow up on?
Really, it dovetailed on the, the financing part of it, and Dr. Whitaker, I believe that you had asked last time, I had made a presentation of what grants were available, and what I was gonna reference was the fourth section with regard to potential funding sources, I put a list in there that has federal agencies, state agencies, and also private agencies, which I think might be good sources for us to inquire of.
Okay, all right, thank you. That wasn't so bad. That wasn't so bad.
All right. That is our last non-agenda speaker, and that completes our agenda, this meeting is adjourned.